Just give me a topic in like four minutes.
I think I have the prayer.
Oh, wasn't it? The one I kept using. It must have been.
You see, just you know, um, run a bullet.
Just a blank.
Did you just pick one up there?
No, I've written this.
This one actually.
Okay, brother. Oh, is it? And he, does he full time?
But he goes on now. He said, uh, more and more.
So, oh.
Oh, and he never was to you in the valley.
The waiver.
That's right. Most of the guys.
Yeah, I don't think he's. You see, really? I don't even know that.
Oh, yeah, it's just got like a, 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 a. They were coming back with the Anderson's. I just remember. Strange. True focus. You're on her, yeah. He's almost out of the area. All of it. Stayed actually. I don't know. You go off.
Having a broken pillow.
So like. He's got a mic. We'll be able to get it. It's live.
We could take a, we could take a. We're Jake. He'll say. We hope. Because if you two leave.
Then I hope to even know that, that happens sometimes.
Well, Mike, I hope, is Mike supposed to be here? Yeah, so as long as you, Mike and Dan are here, we're good, so. I hope he's gonna be here. If not, we'll have a recess until they get back, yes, so.
Fine looking bunch here. All right, I need to find.
We're ready.
Waiting on one more council member maybe for a minute. Do we have any? With Mike, is he?
As far as I know, he's planning to be here.
Okay, he's on the way. All right. Great.
You want to read the pledge?
Yeah, we need help with the pledge. I love to ask. Do we have a young person here that would like to lead us in the pledge? Max will, very. Max, he's been looking for something tonight. I got to see. Get you on the record officially, Max. That sounds great, thank you. All right. Are we ready to get started then with recording?
It's on.
Okay. Fantastic. Thank you all for being here this evening for our Monday, June 20th city council meeting. Uh, we're so excited to have all of you here that are in the room. We have a special presentation tonight. Um, we are going to excuse council member Jake Hoyt, who is on a humanitarian trip, uh, this week. And, uh, so we're grateful we have our enough here to meet a quorum. We need to have at least count three council members in attendance to have a quorum for the meeting. Um, in any event I'm conducting, I'm Mayor Carolyn Lundberg and would like to welcome all of you here in the room and as well as those that may be online. And, uh, we will first begin. Uh, we usually begin with a, with a word of prayer. And council member Van Broderick has offered to give that prayer and then we will follow with the pledge of allegiance given by Max Smith-Madson.
Our heavenly father, we're grateful for this beautiful day, grateful for the opportunity that we have to meet here in this Linden City Council meeting tonight. We're grateful for this great community that we live in and for the people and the great citizens that are here. We're grateful for their goodness and kindness and service to one another. We're grateful tonight that our youth council is here and grateful for them and for their interest in community government and the service that they will provide. Would ask thy spirit to be with us here in this meeting tonight, that the decisions that need to be made can be discussed and that, uh, courtesy and thorough discussion can occur and the proper decisions can be made. We're grateful for the employees of Linden City, for our public, uh, respond, first responders and for their service. Grateful for them, please bless and be with them. Now we invite thy spirit to be with us in this meeting in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Maxus.
One nation under God, please join the side of the flag. Ready to begin?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much, Maxus. All right, so the next order of business we have at the front of the room, if you'd like to follow along, youth council, we always have the, uh, council agenda here, uh, at the, at the front of the room as you walk in. Um, it's also posted online. Uh, so let's go ahead and next we will have our call to order. So roll call, I will start here on my right with council member Magelby.
Darryl Magelby, present.
Mike Van Sherry, present.
Carolyn Lundberg, present.
Van Broderick, present.
Randy Powell, present.
All right, all present, thank you. And again, like we mentioned, uh, council member Hoyt is excused this evening. Uh, we will now go on to item number two, uh, which is our presentations and announcements. Uh, so we will go ahead and at this time we will, uh, I'll first give the council an opportunity to have any quick comments or announcements that are outside of their council report.
Outside of my council report, I just want to acknowledge that today is the longest day of the year.
Fantastic, okay, mark your watch.
Daylight wise, yes.
All right, wonderful. Okay, so we are going to, uh, we have a special, uh, presentation this evening. We have our newly formed inaugural first ever youth city council for the city of Linden and we have a lot of great things we're expecting of this bunch and we're excited to work with them. And I am going to turn the time over to council member Randy Powell, who is our council liaison advisor to the youth council.
Well, thank you very much, Mayor Lundberg. Um, I want to express my gratitude for all those in attendance that are here that are, um, not just for the, um, the youth council participants, but their family and those are here that are supporting them. Um, just a real brief history. Um, I started on council, um, my first year was, I took my oath of office in January of 2012. That year I went up to the state capital and witnessed for the first time youth council from across the state and it's been just my desire to hope and, and hope that we would have one in Linden and we finally do. So it's exciting time for us to be able to have these wonderful qualified youth that have been, um, uh, interviewed by a panel of, of many adults and they were very brave and facing four or five of us at a time sometimes. So, um, with further ado, I'd like to maybe bring some of these, um, bring the youth forward and, and have them be introduced to those who are here and also for the parents. But before I do that, I just want to also acknowledge, um, Kim Lloyd. Kim, can you please come up, um, and stand for us? And then, um, Chris, Steve Stewart, I'd almost made you a congressman, sorry. Steve Stewart.
Giving promotion.
And then also, um, we have Ladon Edwards. Uh, she is not able to, um, be with us because of a family illness. Um, and they are our, um, adult community advisors for, um, our, um, city youth council. And then we have, um, Brittany Laidler. Her to be acknowledged, she's our staff representative.
And she's amazing.
She is.
She's our inside woman, so.
Yeah, she's.
Thank you, can we give a round of applause for our.
Okay, so, um, we had our first activity on Memorial Day and we're still getting to know each other because what did, what do we count? We have seven different high schools or educational opportunities.
Yes.
Um, whether it's a high school, junior high, homeschool, um, college, but you fit the demographics as far as the age range. And so we're so proud to introduce. We have 13 participants. We have 12 of them that are, I'm sorry, 11 that are here tonight, is that correct? Yeah, something like, Kim and, and Steve will keep me on track here with this one. So I'm going to introduce and if you'll come forward when I announce your name, please. Elise Lundberg.
Elise is not feeling well, so she's.
Okay, and I think somebody here really knows how, so send her our love, okay? Will you please, Mayor?
Thank you.
Cameron Lloyd. Thank you, come on up, Cameron. Connor Patton.
Come on up front and face the audience, thank you.
And then we've got Yvonne Gleason.
Jace Anderson.
Jack Bernard.
And Jack had, uh, camp this week.
That's right. And then Jocelyn, and how, how would you like your last name? I never do it right, Jocelyn.
Abachi.
Abachi, thank you, and I will get that more specifically written down.
Fantastic Portuguese pronunciation.
Um, and then, um, Kimberly Richardson. Kimberly, Maximus Madson. Malia Funes, is that correct? Malia.
Funes.
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 Funes. Reese Tobler. There's Reese. Uh, Riley Swalberg. And Shulon Jensen. These fine youth are going to represent us in so many wonderful activities. They will also participate, um, through the summer in, um, some getting to know each other activities, things within the community. They'll be part of Linden Day's activities. And then come in the fall, we will be having opportunities for them to actually acquire positions. They'll help nominate themselves or each other and, um, sit as mayor. Um, uh, council members, secretary, there'll be lots of positions that they will acquire and learn throughout the year. They'll have their own mock, um, uh, council every second Tuesday of each month. And just wonderful opportunities for us to get to know each other. So, um, after this, we're gonna probably take a little group photo, would you think, here with the council mayor?
Yes, absolutely.
Um, these fine people and their folks are gonna head over to the community center into the cen, uh, the cultural arts auditorium where they will meet with their advisors and, um, have some more instructions on that. But we'd like to welcome them here in our change, uh, council chambers.
So let's go ahead and take a photo and then after the photo, we'll have you guys sit for a little bit. We'll maybe have you observe council meeting just for a few minutes and then we'll excuse over to the community center for orientation. Very good. All right, so coming close together, we all like each other, we love each other.
Okay, I got like three, you can choose your best one.
All right, thank you guys, we'll take your seats, thank you so much. Well, we certainly are just thrilled. Thank you to the council who, uh, has helped us get this stood up as well as our, our city administrator, Adam Cowie. He did a tremendous amount of research in helping this get stood up and we're gonna do a lot of exciting things this year. We're so thrilled to have you involved. And, uh, you know, the mission of this youth council, uh, is to not only actively participate in city events, but we hope that this is a great skill building, service, character building opportunity for you and also to be advocates for other youth in our community. So kind of you guys are gonna be like the eyes and ears, kind of watching what's going on and we hope you can give us feedback about things, how we can make it better here in Linden. So thank you so much. Uh, any comments or questions from our council? All right. Great, okay, so, uh, I guess that concludes item number two. Uh, so now, item number three, at the beginning of each meeting, we always have an opportunity for what's called open session for public comment. This is where anyone from the public may come and, uh, speak with the council on anything that is not on the agenda this evening. So I invite anyone to come forward if they so wish. All right. Looks like it all is well in Linden today, okay, wonderful. Um, so next, item number four, this is our council reports. And, uh, we'll start with Darryl here.
Excellent, thank you. Um, the last council meeting we had, we had Utah Valley Chamber of Commerce president and a few other representatives that came to our meeting and, and requested that we participate and help, um, in some way, be a liaison and I've accepted that assignment to do that and looking forward to being on a couple of their committees to help them to move things forward and, and have a presence there with them. It's been an organization I've been involved in back in the 90s for a decade and enjoyed my service there and look forward to being with them again. Linden Days is moving forward, we're excited about the events on July 30th through August 6th. Uh, there's a lot of participation and a lot of interest. We do have UBU that has requested to be a sponsor and we've got them to be a sponsor and we've got them signing up to, uh, support financially, but also possibly have a parade entry, trying to get permission to have their, I think it's called a green.
Green man group.
Green man group.
Like the blue man group.
So we're hoping to have them in the parade this year and, and some other great entries. So everything's doing well there and I'm grateful to be a participant with the Linden Days this year. That's all I have.
Thank you so much, Darryl, for taking that assignment with the Utah Valley Chamber and, uh, there's a lot of great committees there. So looking forward to you being involved and reporting back to us, thank you. All right, Mike Van Sherry.
Uh, we have a, a local business who we've been working with uh, in terms of, uh, improving and taking care of some issues on the borders of their property. We've met with him, the gentleman several times. Uh, I visited with him a little bit and gave him till Friday to, uh, to cooperate. So I think at this point, we now need to turn it over to our enforcement division and, and have them, um, act accordingly. So hopefully we'll get that taken care of. Uh, the other thing is, uh, just Monday morning, we have a, a meeting with the, uh, North Point Solidway Special Services District. Uh, things are going well there. And I think that's all I have to report, thank you.
Thank you so much, all right, uh, really quickly, uh, the American Fork Canyon Working Group just wanted to, the community to know that nineteen twenty-two is when the Tepanogus Cave opened and so it's the one to, it's the centennial anniversary. So the, uh, Timp Cave is going to be having quite a number of activities throughout the summer. Um, arts, arts in the park and different events there. So we'll be posting those hopefully kind of on our social media. And then also I attended the, uh, last and final Lake Commission, uh, board meeting this past week. It will now, uh, convert into the Lake Authority, uh, entity and there's a lot of great work going forward to mitigate different issues with the lake and hopefully open it up to getting cleaned up. There's a lot of great, uh, funding that's now gonna be coming from the state capital general fund that's gonna be really helpful, uh, mitigating the invasive species as well as water quality and different projects and getting folks to be able to enjoy recreational uses there. And then also the, uh, the last thing here really quickly, American Fork Canyon. For those of you that like to go up the canyon to Tibble Fork or even the Upper Silver Lake, uh, they are just now completing all the fiber optic. They're to have cell service all the way through those different areas. So, uh, which is great because I was just there this weekend and it was busy. So, anyway, uh, that's all I have for now, I'll pass over to you, Dan.
Just one item and this is for the youth council and everybody that's young at heart. The pool, as you can see, is open and we've, uh, we talked about in our last, uh, council meeting, the, the grand opening of the slide, but I had the opportunity to use it in this last period. It is way fun, so I'm just gonna tell you, go give it a whirl. It is a ton of fun to do. I'm much better at the slide than I am on the flow rider, so that's it.
You're better than me on all of it, so. Thank you, um, been working, um, with, um, Kelly Johnson and, and our public safety department. We're working on our CERT, um, program. Um, they've spent the first three weeks Saturdays working on practicals for some of the people who are going to be doing, um, the training for the upcoming time. This next week, some fun little things that, um, it's just important to make sure that you've checked your, um, 72-hour kits. I'll give you that, that little push from, from Kelly as, as we're getting ready to do some more training within the community this Saturday. Um, I'm, I'm assuming Carolyn, you'll, you'll be there as well for a little bit. We'll be watching some of the mock trainings that some of these people will be doing and it's a very enti, and, and exciting time. Um, not only is Kelly Johnson working on this, it's also Angie, um, Hendricks. And, um, what's Mike's last name, is it, it's not Brown. Mike, Mike the man. And he's getting it done. He's, he's one of our trainers, he's kind of a, um, all, all, all purpose, um, volunteer who loves to help train with the CERT program. And then, um, on our senior center, just a couple of highlights. Um, this, um, we've got coming up always, we've always got cardio drumming. I love teaching cardio drumming over there with our seniors and that's on Thursdays at 11:15, we do that for a half hour every Thursday. Coming up this week is, um, this, um, Wednesday is our, um, paint and punch. Um, somebody's going to be teaching us to paint, like, do you remember all of us old people, Bob Ross? You know, it's very calming and I don't know if there's going to be any Froze involved with this, but it's gonna be a, a taste touching, taste testing of punch and a little, um, learning on the Bob Ross way, um, is what I'm being told. And then, yes, and then the seniors will also have the opportunity, anybody 16 over, to participate, um, with the, um, there is going to be a pool party on, on next Wednesday. Uh, you just have to make your reservations by this coming Monday. Or so, a week from today, so, but the senior center's going really well and, is that all? And, oh, youth council is just humming along wonderfully, we're so excited about it, so, there you go.
And one of the activities we're gonna be planning with you first, you'll be helping with, is with our emergency management coordinator, Kelly Johnson, who she mentioned. Uh, there's a special big fall event that Linden City is going to host just for youth, emergency preparedness for youth, so you guys will be helping spearhead that, so. That's exciting stuff. Um, okay, so thank you, we'll now move to our administrators' report.
Um, just quickly, a reminder, our next meeting is July 18th. We don't have one the first part of July, due to the fourth holiday. Um, and then, just another reminder, Mayor, that we've got the newsletter for
Correct.
the following months, so that's due the end of June, so that's coming up. Okay. Um, had a, just a, a question to ask you regarding Hollow Park, um, whether there might be interest. We had, uh, received word that this property here, it will be going up for sale. It is not on our park master plan. Uh, is there interest? I know we had, had some interest to potentially acquire this and that didn't work out. This is about an acre. Um, is there interest for us to pursue that in any way?
I think we'd like to explore the options or what could be there.
Okay.
A portion of it.
It, it's kind of an awkward piece, for sure, in that configuration without the other.
Neither one of these can probably subdivide and Heath was, was wondering if we could potentially pick up the back half of both of those where they'd still have a half acre lot.
I think that could be very interesting.
Explore some options?
Sure.
Um, just, uh, another FYI, if you can put this on your calendar for Monday, September 12th at 5:30, uh, at the community center, we will have our next joint council social with American Fork, Cedar Hills and Pleasant Grove. And Darryl, we might hit you up for food on that, so.
I'm kind of, I'm supporting.
We're hosting, we're hosting.
He volunteered, I remember.
I remember that, so September 12th at 5:30, it's a Monday. Um, and then just an FYI, Provo and Orem have been in discussions to combine their dispatch centers. Uh, we don't believe there's any implications for Linden City as part of that. They would still be contractually obligated to provide that service. Uh, we are in that contract with Orem until 2028. But just an FYI, if you've read that in the paper, ever heard anything there, we're not expecting any changes to our service there, so. Um, and then also, if, if you or others in the community have, uh, purchased 10 or 12 years ago, uh, pavers in front of the Aquatic Center, there's a handful of those that are still available for families and things. And, uh, in fact, Lincoln, I saw your name there.
Pavers that were purchased and, and etched.
Um, so we, we wanted to try to get those back to, uh, to the families that had those and, um, anyway.
Appreciate you delivering mine.
You bet, so. That's all I have, thank you.
All right, thank you, Adam. All right, we'll move on to item number six, the approval of the minutes. Uh, this is a point where we review the meeting, meeting minutes of our last, uh, council meeting and, uh, anyone have any comments or revisions for Kathy, our recorder, this evening?
I have no changes.
I'll make a motion then.
Okay, I'll take a motion.
I'll make some, make a motion to approve the minutes of, um, city council meeting on June 6th, 2022.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion by Randy and seconded by Darryl. Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, it is unanimous, all right. That speaks to how well Kathy records our meetings and types up the agendas and the, and the, uh, the minutes for us, totally clean, so thank you Kathy for all you do. All right. Okay, and then item number seven, we have no consent agenda items this evening. Um, so at this point, if I may ask council and staff, I think this might be a good time for us to potentially, uh, invite, uh, council member, uh, Van Broderick to act as mayor pro tem as Randy and I will be excused for a few moments with our youth council.
Like to give them a head start or we'll just go?
Yeah. Uh, so let's go ahead, um, let's go ahead and we'll excuse, uh, those families and we'll take you over to the community center. And then, uh, item number eight here, I, is that all right? If I just go ahead and excuse myself temporarily and thank you so much. I don't know that we need to make an official motion of any kind for that. Okay, perfect. All right. Thank you so much for holding down the fort while we step away for a minute.
A second? That was when we spend money after they leave.
That's the fun part, spend money.
Lincoln, you can stay here.
All right, if you wanna go ahead.
All right, we will continue now with item number eight, a review on action item, the 2022 road maintenance projects bid award.
So, um, we have, uh, planned 1,976,000 and some change there for street maintenance projects and everything underneath these squares, this is a little bit harder to see some of these roads, will have some sort of surface treatment. Uh, some of these will occur this fall and may extend into next spring and early summer. Um, so overlays and some seal coats and then a couple, uh, more significant reconstruction, uh, of some roadways just up in this area, that's a little bit hard to see there, so. Um, I'm gonna zoom in on that if I can. So right where that red stretch is on, I believe that's 550 East, uh, there's a section there that was in pretty bad shape and will be a full reconstruction just on that red portion, so. Um, we only had one bidder on this and it was a little bit higher than the engineer's estimate, but given the climate with all of the projects going on in the valley uh, and the costs increases that we've seen in the market, we're still recommending approval on this.
Question, Adam, is that common for only one bidder on roads or?
Uh, it's, I wouldn't say it's uncommon. Um, there's only two or three pretty big companies that we usually see bid on these projects and so our assumption is they're all busy, so.
It's not particularly uncommon in today's day and, and environment. 10 years ago, not so much.
Yeah.
Was it Geneva Rock that had the last contract that was like this?
We have worked with them before in the past and they've done well.
This last one before.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's about just over 10% higher than what we had anticipated.
Yeah, about 200,000, so.
Any?
Question or discussion?
I would mo, make a motion to approve the 222 road maintenance project bid to Geneva Rock Products in the amount of 1,976,223 dollars and 91 cents as presented.
I have a motion, do we have a second?
A second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
That is unanimous. All right, number, item number nine on the agenda, review on action engineering services for the secondary water metering project.
So with, uh, before we select contractors for installation of the secondary water meters uh, throughout the city, uh, we will be contracting with, um, what's being recommended with Hanson Allen Loose. Uh, they're an, an engineering firm that is currently doing our capital facilities update for water and, I believe, stormwater. And they actually were the ones that helped Saratoga Springs through some of their secondary metering project. Um, and it sounds like that was a very successful, um, process. And so we were recommending that we award this, um, design and document preparation and bidding assistance to. and bidding assistance to Hanson Allen Luce in the amount of fifty-five thousand. And they will also help prepare some public outreach and materials for us as we move forward. Uh the intent right now is to bid uh the community and split it into three different sections. And so we could end up with three different contractors or a single contractor if they have a low bid on that. But the, the intent is opening the ability to get more areas done faster, uh given some of our timelines on the grant. So. Any questions on this?
Do we have any update on arrival of the meters or how long that process is gonna take?
As I recall, Juan was thinking it was six to nine weeks after we placed that order and we approved that purchase at our last meeting. So it'll be a couple of months.
So having attended the Utah League of Cities and Towns Conference, like all of you did in St. George, I don't know how many of you listened to that presentation and other areas on this. The idea of having an outside group do it is that our crews are incredibly busy. And then to add all of this additional work on it, it would be very, very difficult. So I'm just saying I'm way in favor of this.
And we did something similar to this with the Heritage Trail was this?
This, this is the beginning part of that. So they will help with, so they're, they're designing the specifications, the drawings and preparing the bid package that will go out to the contractors who will then bid on the project. And then they'll help prepare some of these PR materials. Still to come would be who we contract with for handling some of those public comments and things. But yes, similar to the trail is what we would expect. That will have either Hanson Allen Luce or somebody else that they've worked with in the future.
So the fifty-five, fifty-four, fifty-four thousand, and then we've got the personnel charges in there. Is that how it's broken down and how they'll use that or that is, is that what will happen? Those will be, come into play if we go outside that?
Those are if you go outside of that dollar amount. So yeah, their, their total is fifty-five thousand.
Okay. Just clarifying. Thank you.
Further discussion or question? Would be ready for a motion.
To approve the engineering services for secondary water metering project with Hanson Allen and is it Luce?
Luce.
Incorporated in the amount of fifty-five thousand as presented.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? A motion and a second. Any further discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That was unanimous.
And Mayor Pro Tem, I'm going to excuse myself for a moment to head over to the community center. I want to be back for at least the tail end of Christian, Chris, Kristen's presentation. So I'll try to hurry.
No guarantees.
Yes.
All right, next item number ten, review and action of auditing services.
So we have been currently with K and C certified public accountants uh who have performed our audit for probably twelve years or so. And it's healthy that we, nine? Okay, nine years. And healthy that we changed that up periodically. And they had actually been doing some of our accounting preparatory services and well, as well. And there was a little concern that they're auditing their own work. And so um we felt like this was an opportunity to bid this out and worked with cadency to go through that process. Gilbert and Stewart certified public accountants were the only firm that bid um on these services. And so we are recommending that we contract with them. There's an agreement there that's included in your staff report um on the next page there. This uh letter that's attached that outlines their scope of services for the estimated amount of twenty-three thousand dollars per year on their audit.
How's that compare from previous years with the K and C?
Do you recall?
K and C was fifteen thousand. They bid nine years ago. So.
Oh.
And like he said, they were the only ones who bid. We put it out on the, on SciQuest. And they do a lot of cities. So I've never heard other finance directors complain about them. So.
Yeah. They had, they've done Orem in the past and several other cities in the valley. So.
Any other questions? Are we ready for a motion?
I'm ready.
Kind of you too.
I'll make a motion to approve the contract with Gilbert and Stewart for auditing services as presented.
I'll second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That was unanimous of the three that are here. Item number eleven, a public hearing for the fiscal year twenty twenty-three, transfer of enterprise funds to the general fund. Did we have a motion? A motion to open a public hearing, please?
I'll make the motion.
All right, we have a motion? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
That was unanimous. We're now in a public hearing.
So each year, the city, if we are transferring funds from our enterprise funds, our utility funds to the general fund, we are required by state law to hold a public hearing to accept public comment on these transfers. Uh we sent out notices of this that we hope all of our residents and businesses received in the mail. We've put it on social media, sent out emails on the website, tried to get the word out for this. This is a transfer of funds um that is not paid back. These are covering administrative costs but also supplementing the general fund. And so uh the percentages and dollar amounts are listed there in your staff report and, and on the agenda. So the purpose of this um is simply to just take public comment on these potential transfers. These dollar amounts are included in the budget that you'll review in a subsequent item uh here on the agenda tonight. With uh, I don't know that I have, sorry, I don't know if I have anything else to say on that. So. You're welcome to take public comments.
This is a public hearing. Anybody have comments in this regard?
I just had a question. Um it just appeared, I'm new here, my second year.
All right, if you'd be kind enough to state your name.
My name is Michael Castalno. I'm a new resident. If it just occurs here and appears to be in here, right, you can correct me if I'm wrong here, that if the city needs funding somewhere else, they just increase water, sewer, trash as necessary and then transfer over to where they need it. Is that right?
Do you want to address that?
That's, that's, I guess, potentially a, a possibility. So, but it certainly isn't the intent of, of the city to raise rates, to fund other things. The way that we've looked at this fund transfer, which we've done every year and, and most other entities in the state of Utah do something similar. Uh these enterprise funds, the utility funds, sewer, water, garbage, storm water, they act independently of the city. They are a separate revenue generating fund. And those funds essentially contract with the city for other services, administrative needs, HR, public safety, things of that matter. And so this is a, a transfer of funds to help cover some of those costs that those enterprises would otherwise have to do and perform if they were a private independent business. And so um the city provides those services. But this is repaying the city for some of the things that those enterprise funds would have to otherwise pay for were they a private enterprise. So if that helps.
Marginally. So how come we don't reduce the water, the sewer and the trash fees so that you don't have any extra and then just increase the fees to whatever, where it's really needed?
So some of those fees that would have to be increased would be property taxes. And so in effort, this is a, a way to help keep property taxes low um and as part of that transfer. So.
The result is the same, isn't it? I mean, you increase the property taxes the same amount that you will decrease how much you pay for water, sewer and trash. Is that not correct?
That could be the case. Um.
I just don't understand why we're shifting money around where if you need more money and you charge something else and then siphoning you as opposed to charging where you really need money?
It's, it, it has. And it's a great, it's a great comment and I understand your, your comments. Raising, and again, Mayor Pro Tem, my, my personal opinion on this, raising property taxes is an extremely difficult and divisive action that cities can, can take.
It's easy to increase water, so we use that instead to get the money we need as to property taxes, which is more difficult, right?
That is one, I will say that is one reason why this is probably done. So my, in my opinion, that is a very difficult thing to raise property taxes to cover some of these costs. So.
May I volunteer that these, if, if the water and sewer were run as a pri, by a private company, then they would be paying property taxes to the city. And so this is kind of part of that transfer is also like if, if they had to pay property tax to the city. But and then also it, it, the people paying property taxes aren't always the same people that are paying the utility bills, um because there's renters that, that will be paying the utility bill. So it's kind of shifting, I mean, I know a lot of the homeowners, it's the same whether it's property tax or utility bill. But that's just another thought.
Further comments there?
Not for me.
All right, if there's no further comments, I would take a motion to close the public hearing.
So there's no action item on this? It's just, yep, just to close the public hearing. So.
Daryl, can we get a second?
I'll second.
All in favor of closing the public hearing? Aye. That's unanimous for those that are here. And thank you for your comments. Item number twelve, this is another public hearing, fiscal year twenty twenty-three budget option. Annual, or I'm sorry, amend fiscal year twenty twenty-two budget for ordinance twenty twenty-two dash eight dash O. Need a motion?
I'll make a motion to open a public hearing.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous for those here. We're now in a public hearing and we'll turn the time over to Kristen.
All right, so we'll start with reviewing the fraud risk assessment. Is that what we're starting?
It's after the ordinance. Yep. Just keep going. Right there.
All right. So this Utah State Auditor's Office requests that we do a fraud risk assessment and complete this questionnaire um annually and then present this to city council. Um there's no action on this, but we just do need to present it in a city council meeting to let you know what our scores are. And we score, oh, okay, so.
Three twenty-five out of three ninety-five.
There it is. It's three twenty-five out of three ninety-five. And that puts us at a low risk level. And um, do you have any questions on this?
Are, are there any future plans for any of the items? Are we pretty comfortable with where we're at as far as?
There actually are. We're always looking to improve. And so um at the bottom, there's two questions. Does the entity have a formal internal audit function? And we currently do not. But where we're hiring new auditors in K and C, we're still gonna keep on to do some of the financial work. We've actually asked that they add that on to what they do so that they'll, quarterly they'll be coming in and just doing a little internal audit for us. So.
This is what they'll do then separately for, that other stuff goes away and they'll only do this or they're?
Right. So, so we'll have, we're keeping K and C who've been our auditors in the past as financial consultants for, for their, for our books and stuff. And, and, and this is one of the functions that they'll do is our internal audit. And then we, and then we have Stuart and Gilbert, Gilbert and Stuart, who will um be doing the auditing. So.
So do they do, K and C, do they do items eight and nine? Or is it just item eight?
So they would do a, so um the, the formal audit committee would be, and would, we would establish that. And so that's something that we can look at doing. Um in the past, we had two council members and a couple of staff members on that. And we, but we weren't meeting that often. And so we stopped doing that. And so that's something that we can look at. How do we want to comprise a committee? What do we want that committee's responsibilities to be? So we're open to look at that.
And part of that question is how urgently do we feel the need for that as well?
Right.
I mean, we all like great scores, but
Right.
if there's a cost that comes to that beyond what it's worth.
Any other questions? All right, then we will proceed on to the budget amendment.
Just really quick, for a couple of you may not have experienced this yet, our, our auditors will call a few council members during their audit and ask questions related to fraud or if you're aware of anything that's inappropriate going on as far as financial issues. And so just a heads up that that's likely to happen to a few of you. So.
And um so I've, I've put some items in here for the budget amendment for the twenty twenty-two fiscal year. It's not, there, there's a lot of lines, but they're minor adjustments. Um and so we've got.
Can you talk from the mic?
Oh, I totally forgot. Sorry about that. Thank you. Okay, so um we've got several pages of line items that are being amended. But the total citywide is a hundred and sixteen thousand. Let me blow that up.
Which page did you get to?
So now I am on
Eighty-eight.
Page sixty-eight.
Yeah.
And so revenues increased two hundred and fifty-six thousand and, and expenses increased seventy-eight thousand. And then impacts on the fund balance and transfers. Are there any questions on this budget amendment?
No.
All right. Okay. Then going to the twenty twenty-three fiscal year budget. This is, uh we've, we've talked about this many times. This is our fourth time to review the budget. And you know, we know the economy is continuing to grow with increased sales tax revenue and inflation is increasing as well with May seeing eight point six percent increase over the previous year. Fee schedule changes, we do have a few new ones that have not been seen. That is um in the development area, um changing the sewer line TV inspection fee from eighty-five cents per linear foot to a dollar per linear foot. The secondary water meter installation prices are increasing due to the increased cost of the meters. And um the certified tax rate was just recently set by the county and it's changing from point one 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 six percent to point zero nine zero seven percent. And this is to keep us basically revenue ru, neutral. And so the rate is decreasing as property values increase. And um then the road cut permit, just a wording change, um it's a thousand dollars per cut. And so sometimes there's companies that come in and they are doing multiple cuts on the same little stretch. And so um we just needed to clarify that, that what they're bonding for is a thousand dollars per cut. And then we've presented the water, garbage, groundwater pumping, recycling, sewer utility fee and stormwater utility fee increases previously, as well as um taking out the SWIP sign deposit. So um the, the change on an average bill, utility bill is about six dollars per month. And um the revenues for the city are twenty-eight point five million net of fund balance uses and transfers. And the expenditures are thirty-one point five million. And that is also net of fund balance appropriations and transfers. All of this is the same, the personnel um increases. All of this is the same, the personnel increases for a merit pay, merit increase in January, no COLA in July, because that was given early, and then insurance premiums going up, six point eight percent dental, for medical insurance premium, dental going up five percent. The overall impact is sixty-three thousand for the year. And new positions, full-time streets technician, part-time code enforcement officer, part-time recreation coordinator, a second part-time clerk at the front desk, and establishing operator, one, two, three positions in water, sewer, and stormwater, and not all of those positions will be filled, it's just establishing those positions for upward movement and employee And for operations, our big expenditure that's atypical will be installing the secondary water meters throughout the city, and we've actually got a lot of funding coming in for this project, so this is a great time to take advantage of the funding and get this done, because it is a state mandate. And there's two point eight million budgeted in this year's budget.
Kristen, regarding the water resources, ARPA funds or these other funds, I was reading that some government entities are using those funds to flip the strip, the cost to flip the strip on some of their properties, to go to Waterwise landscaping.
Oh.
It says you're looking, trying to increase the amount, I'm just.
Um, so we're trying to increase, so we've got funding, it's going to be two point eight million for this, this year, but Juan's thinking it's going to extend into the next year, and so, so far, we've got two point nine million to, to fund that, so hopefully, and that's, and I, and we're asking for more funding on this project from the Division of Water Resources.
On the state.
So, right, so, it, you know, if we do end up with getting more funding than the cost, then we can use the, the ARPA funds for other, yeah, looking at other projects, yeah.
Great.
All right, and the capital projects that we've listed before, they have not changed, so we've got the funds, and the road fund, RDA, the park tax, and the park impact fees, water, sewer, storm, recreation. Any questions on those? And then, the fund balance, we're looking at ending next year at thirty-two point four percent of our revenues, and the state has a cap of thirty-five percent, so it's right up there. And they do not want us to go over.
What happens if we do?
Um, they will, right, we will get written up by the auditors and have to have a plan of what to do with the excess revenue, excess fund balance, I mean.
Put it back in the water.
And that is the budget.
That one might have been out of order.
Yeah, I'm going to hand it right back to you.
Yeah, I, I skipped around it, so, we covered it in the order I wanted, and then there was a lot of documentation in there for our financial policies, the, the complete fee schedule, the compensation programs that we have, so. Any other questions regarding the budget?
Well, thank you, this is a long process that starts months and months ago, lots of hours and effort's gone into it, so appreciate the staff on doing that, and I'm going to just turn it back over to Mayor Lundberg, and we are in the middle of a public hearing.
Thank you.
And item number twelve.
Thank you for letting us leave things in more than capable hands, Mayor Pro Tem Van Broderick, so, thank you, all right, so, being a public hearing, any comment from our public that is here in attendance? All right.
I'll make, I was going to say, I didn't get to make a motion for a long time, I can make a motion to close the public hearing.
We have a motion to close the public hearing by Councilmember Broderick. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Powell. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, that does carry, thank you. All right, moving on, any further discussion of this item number?
You ready for a motion?
I am ready, yes, thank you.
Get back up to the. I move to approve ordinance 2022-8-0, adopting the fiscal year 2023 final budget and amending the fiscal year 2022 budget as presented.
All right, thank you, we have a motion by Councilmember Broderick.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Councilmember Magalbee, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that is unanimous as well, thank you so much. All right, moving forward, item number twelve.
Thirteen.
Sorry, thirteen, excuse me.
Make a motion if I could, Mayor?
Yes, please.
I move to recess the Linden City Council meeting and convene the Linden City RDA.
All right, thank you, we have a motion.
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Broderick, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we are now going into our redevelopment agency meeting, and do we have any other staff that need to come forward at this point?
Got minutes there, I think, for the RDA first.
All right, okay, so we will first, it looks like we will need to first do our call to order, or roll call, for the RDA, so, we'll start with an aye from each member.
Count, oh, Board Member Powell, aye.
Board Member Broderick, aye.
Board Member Lundberg, aye.
Board Member Ben Sherry, aye. Board Member Daryl Magalbee, aye.
All right, thank you so much. All right, so we'll move forward and review the minutes from May sixteenth, twenty twenty-two. Any comments, any changes needed?
Oh, no, I didn't see anything.
Okay, all in order then?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from Ju-, the RDA minutes from June sixth, twenty twenty-two.
All right, thank you, we have a motion, second?
I'll second.
Okay, motion by Councilmember Powell and seconded by Councilmember.
Board Member.
I'm sorry, seconded by Councilmember Magalbee, all in favor to approve the minutes?
Aye.
Okay, we are approved, thank you. Okay, now we'll move to item number three, which is the review in action, so we're going to review and consider adopting the official project area plan for the Linden Park Community Reinvestment area, and this will be presented by our Community Development Director, Michael Florence, and our guest again, and I apologize, I should remember your name, Rob, thank you, Rob, for being here again.
Of course. Well, thank you, Board Members, so this evening, we are presenting the inter-local agreement, and you've got a resol-, or a resolution with the City Council and the redevelopment board, and so, Rob's going to go over the purpose of the inter-local agreement, and we'll be able, be glad to answer any questions.
Perfect, thanks, Mike.
Just really quick, I'm sorry to interrupt, I think, I think Kathy, we put out the wrong agenda, the hard copy here, we, in the, the digital copy. Yeah, did you have, pick up a hard copy out here? Yeah, so I think that was our, our one from June sixth, I apologize for that, so.
I will refer to what's on my laptop.
So, if, action item number three is actually the public hearing on the final budget resol- resolution for the RDA, you guys just stay there, you're good.
Thanks, Mike.
We'll get to you in just a second.
Get to the.
And Kristen, can you run us through here, those changes?
Oh, Kristen might have just stepped out.
She's right there, so.
Thank you, Kristen, I apologize.
Do we need a public hearing right now?
Yeah.
I make a motion to open a public hearing.
Okay, thank you. Okay, motion to open a public hearing by Councilmember Broderick and seconded by Councilmember Powell, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
And just for clarification, on the meeting, so the minutes that were approved were for June sixth.
Correct, and that's what I said.
All right, just wanted to make sure we got that.
I did say May sixteenth, I believe, so.
Yeah, that's the, oh.
Okay, so we can get that.
I used my one from home.
Okay, thank you.
Got it corrected, thank you. Okay, perfect.
Should be pretty quick, so.
All right, thank you, Kristen, I'll turn the time over to you again.
Yep, right there.
Yes, so we are doing a budget amendment for the RDA for the 2022 fiscal year, and it's to increase for some fees, so it's fifteen hundred dollars. That's it for the, and then if you want to go to the 2023 fiscal year, and so that's the, the budget for the twenty-three fiscal year for the RDA, no, no changes, so.
All right, Council, any questions or discussion further on this item?
I guess, I'm wondering if the public has any.
All right, and then, do we have any questions or comments from our public?
I'll make a motion to close, if that's okay, Mayor?
Okay, thank you.
A second.
Okay, motion to close the public hearing by Councilmember Powell and seconded by Councilmember Broderick, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, aye, okay, moving forward, are we ready to have any further discussion or make a motion on this amendment? Okay, I'll entertain a motion if that's the case, maybe from one of our gentlemen over here.
I'll do it, I move to approve Resolution 2022-7-RDA, adopting the fiscal year 2023 final RDA budget.
Okay, fantastic, thank you, motion by Councilmember Broderick, do we have a second? Seconded by Councilmember Magalbee, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, wonderful, we got that bit of housekeeping done, thank you again, Kristen. All right, and we'll move on to the next item.
Awesome, so, thank you, Members of the Board, if you remember, a few weeks ago, we were here and we adopted the plan and budget, which kind of helps guide the development in the Linden Park Community Reinvestment area, and one of the last official documents we have to do, which will then be what gives the agency approval to receive project area funds, is entering into an interlocal agreement with the taxing entities, in this case, for this project area, it'll just be with the city, and this is the official document that we'll send to the county, which then will help fund the project area. So, a couple of, of highlights within local agreement, so as Mike mentioned, it needs to be passed by a resolution, and then the agency will adopt it, and then we'll adjourn and reconvene as a council, and then the council will adopt the agreement as well. So, a couple of, of notes, so we adopted the project area budget last meeting, and that budget assumed a fifteen-year, seventy-five percent participation rate on the incremental property tax for the city. Also, we talked about a two hundred and fifty thousand one-time payment from RDA number three fund balance, that will be received at the certificate of occupancy for the auto dealer, and then finally, a sales tax incentive agreement for a period of five years. Some details on that property tax agreement, so the baser value will be three point one-nine-eight million dollars, and the city will continue to receive their roughly thirty-six hundred dollars of revenue on that during the life of the project area, and then that pot of money will be distributed as follows, so eighty-seven percent will go towards the developer to help offset some of those initial infrastructure costs there, that they have, ten percent will go into the Affordable Housing Fund, that the city can then use as they see fit to support affordable housing initiatives in Linden, and then finally, three percent will be used to administer the CRA. And then some of the sales tax agreement provisions that are in the agreement, it's just the city local sales and use tax only, so not that park tax, and then what will happen is the city will keep the first one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars of sales tax revenue, and then the agreement says that they'll give the remaining balance to the agency for a five-year period, and that one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars is roughly fifty percent of the sales tax that we've projected. Overall, there's a tax participation cap of six hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars, and that includes the sales and the property. And if the dealership performs above projections, which we think they will, then that overall tax participation cap will be reached well before the fifteen-year period, and at that point, we would just write a letter to the county that just says that this project's been sunsetted. And yet, it just says in the agreement that the overall life of the agreement is fifteen years or until the tax participation cap is reached, whichever comes first. So, any questions on that?
One question, can you speak to where the park tax does go or doesn't go in this agreement? You say it's not included, but then where does it go, and?
So, it will just go into?
It's, it's not put in and split or anything?
Just treated, just like that?
Just wanted to clarify that.
Correct, yeah.
We'll still get that full, man.
Correct, yeah, and it'll just go to the city as, as if there was no project area.
Thank you.
So, just as an FYI, again, this is all post-performance on all of these, these incentives, and so, before they receive anything, they have to have the dealership completed, it's built, and then with the sales tax and property tax, again, the dealership is in and it's built, it's completed, the sales tax is after that payment is made, and then the city is, is reserved that first one hundred and twenty-five thousand per year, and then after that, the remainder goes to the dealership. So, everything is post-performance on this.
And that's a good point that Adam made, and, and we'll come back in July, we want to get this on the meeting minutes as well, so there's a record of it, but we've drafted the participation agreement with Doug Smith, and we either have, or we'll be sending that to them shortly, okay, we have sent it to them, and then on that agreement, we'll have a lot of those stipulations of what that post-performance means, so one of those is they have to hit a sales tax threshold, and if they don't hit that, then they don't get any sales tax, so that's one of the things that, that Adam mentioned. And then, so we anticipate bringing that back later this summer to have you adopt it after Doug Smith has given us their comments, and, and they're okay on that, and there's that cutoff date of July one, but the law says initiated or completed by July one, and so we feel that given the fact that we've adopted, that we have drafted that and given it to Doug Smith, we're covered, and we're grandfathered in, so we'll be okay with that.
Kathy, if you could just make sure that's noted in the minutes, that, if you can just make sure that's noted in the minutes that we've initiated and sent the draft agreement to Doug Smith, yeah, thank you.
Well, thank you so much, Rob, for your help, and staff for, you know, checking all the things that we need to cover to, to have, to seize this opportunity, so thank you. All right, anything else you'd like to add, Michael?
No, I, I talked to Dave Smith with Doug Smith today, and again, they're extremely grateful for all that the city is doing to help them locate in Linden, so.
All right, any further questions or discussion from Council? All right, seeing none, I'd entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion, here it is. I move to approve Resolution 2022-8-RDA, approving an interlocal co-op- cooperation agreement between the agencies and Linden City for the Linden Park Community Reinvestment Project Area as presented.
Second.
All right, thank you very much, we have a motion by Councilmember Powell, seconded by Councilmember Broderick, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that passes unanimously. Wonderful, thank you for all the hard work getting us here, we're, feels like we're at least halfway there, so. Okay, we'll look forward to seeing you again. Next motion.
I'll be back.
All right, very good.
I sometimes.
Okay. We are concluded, I'll take a motion to adjourn the redevelopment agency.
I move to adjourn the Linden RDA meeting and reconvene the Linden, Linden City Council meeting.
Okay.
I'll second.
By Councilmember Powell, seconded by Councilmember Magalbee, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, very good, we are now going back into our regular council meeting. Thank you again, everyone, we're, you guys are cruising through this fast, I was surprised how fast you got through when Randy and I started.
I'm surprised it wasn't done.
But it is the master getting us to adjournment here. All right, okay, so we're on item number fourteen, this is review in action for diversion of property tax for community reinvestment to project area, all right.
So, the agreement that you just adopted in the RDA, this is now the city acting to adopt the agreement with the RDA, if that makes sense, so we're.
Moving from the board, as board members.
Correct.
Okay, very good, anything else you need to add pertaining to this?
I think we've covered everything, so this is just reversing those roles, so.
Great, we feel very well informed, thank you. Thank you. Okay, Council?
I move to approve Resolution 2022-10-R, adopting the city slash RDA interlocal agreement as presented.
We have a motion by Councilmember Broderick. Do we have a second? Okay, seconded by Councilmember Magalby. All in favor?
Aye.
It's is approved and we're ready to go. Thank you very much again. Okay, we're on to our final action item. Or, excuse me, it is item number 15, resolution for the extension of time to use park impact fees.
So with park impact fees, the state has a a time limit that you have to use these once collected within a certain number of years. Just given with some of the the delays with the the COVID-19 pandemic and some of the the hurdles and obstacles that we've experienced with some of the economic issues going on, some of the projects that we had hoped to complete by these timelines that these funds would have to be used haven't quite been finished. And so you can, by state code, you can extend the time by resolution that you, as a council, want to expend these. You can only do that once. And so we are giving ourselves a little bit of room. The original time to spend, the funds that were collected in 2015, 16, you can see there on the table on page 249, was 2022. And then there's some subsequent years there. We would like to extend all of those to June 30th of 2027. We feel like that will give us time to complete all those projects, so.
All right.
Any questions on that?
Does that impact at all when we put this on the ballot as a city to re-up the park tax? Is that
The impact
Uh, yeah, this is different than the park tax. And so the park tax is collected off of
No, 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 I don't mean that. I mean, the the park tax that we collect, the P-A-R-C.
Correct.
Is going to go on, potentially goes on the ballot here beyond, before this date of 2027.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
How does this look in 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 the attempt to, I mean, I'm in favor of doing this, but I'm just looking at the optics of
I don't, me personally, I don't see any concern there. I I think there's some legitimate labor shortage and supply shortage issues that have happened and occurred. And so extending the time that we can expend the impact fees that are collected at the time of a building permit versus park tax, which is collected through sales tax purchases. Those are, to me, those are two separate pots of money, two separate issues. And so I think we're okay, Van.
And remember, Van, impact fees are only designed to help make up for the burden that new growth has put on, whereas the park tax is designed as a general enhancement for everyone and as is a tax. And so
Flexibility in the park tax.
I'd mix those up just a little bit, sorry.
Easy to do. Good review.
Park tax versus the park tax.
Any other questions on that?
Mayor, I'll make a motion
Thank you.
to approve Resolution Number 2022-11-R, approving the extension of time to use park impact fees as presented.
All right, very good. We have a motion.
Second.
Okay, motion by Councilmember Magalby, seconded by Councilmember Broderick. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, very, we all have, the ayes have it. We pass it unanimously. Oh, took it away from Van. Okay, we have a motion by Randy to adjourn.
Second.
Van, all in favor?
Aye.
I don't think I've ever, ever seen a budget meeting go that fast. So kudos to our staff for preparing amazing information and packet and teeing that up and
Thank you.
All the meetings we've had to be well informed. And thank you, Council. Thank you for covering while we stepped away.
You did wonderful things.
Okay. Thank you, everyone. Have a great week.
I bet he'll be at the council meeting, so.
It's much more tender.